I call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices so that we can conduct our meeting and stand for our panel.
Lord in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we do those who trespass against us. We use not temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America where it stands, one nation on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All speakers should have signed up advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will use the podium. Please state your name and address before giving your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first bell, that means you have thirty seconds left. On the second bell, I will stop you, so that others can speak. Call the first person up, please.
Danielle Clark. Is it on? Good go. My name is Danielle Clark. I live at 100 Ross Street here in the city of Batavia. And I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. First, your website, council. Tammy Schmidt, I'm sure, is very important and lovely, but she has an entire heading on your website just for her. It needs to be fixed. Also, her name is spelt differently in four different places. It's just a mess and in shambles, and it should be fixed. The second reason I am here tonight is because I have five children that I'm raising in this city, that I chose to come back to after growing up in Pavilion. And I am absolutely horrified by the response that I, as a citizen, have received from public officials, public servants throughout this county in regards to the Reawaken America Reawaken America Tour. You're welcome. This is the speaking engagement that's being held at the Cornerstone Church this Friday and Saturday. And throughout last week, the city, everyone I spoke to claimed plausible deniability. Doesn't have anything to do with the city. And I'm here tonight to tell you and to tell the people of City of Batavia that that's not true. Part of the response to this event is the deployment of the emergency response team. The emergency response team, as you are all aware, falls under the Batavia city budget. This year, the response team has been budgeted $35,600 by the council. I had a conversation with Assistant Chief Camp today. He confirmed that they have been asked to deploy and will be at the ready for this event. However, he refused to provide any details that could indicate the approximate cost, under, of course, the guise of operational security. Therefore, leaving me unable to tell you exactly how much it will cost the taxpayers of the city of Batavia. But there will be a cost. Assistant Chief Camp did say that the BPD shoulders approximately sixty percent of the cost of the ERT deployment. And Mr. Camp doesn't seem to think that he has to answer to anyone about his involvement with the ERT and his position there. When he refused to answer any questions about the cost, even to approximate what would be, what the taxpayers would be on the hook for, for this weekend, he said, "I'm done talking to you and I'm going to hang up." And I said, "If you hang up on me before we finish our conversation, I'm going to file an official complaint." And Assistant Chief Camp's response was, "To who?" I don't delude myself with the idea that you guys or any government agency has the authority or the power to prevent events that are being held in a private location. However, I do believe, and I am here to hold you to account for this belief, that as public servants, it is your duty to clearly, vocally, loudly express your opposition for an event like this coming to our community. It is your duty as public servants to let organizations like this know that this city does not stand for hate, this city does not stand for lawlessness, and we won't abide As part of my discussions with public officials regarding this event, after receiving some very concerning replies to my questions and to my concerns about this event, I started asking, "Are you a white supremacist?" I am here asking you each, tonight, everyone on the council, everyone...
Excuse me. Please direct your comments to the chair, please. We're not going to get in debate with public employees, okay? Keep going. Go ahead, continue.
Uh, okay.
That's the rules. I read them right before you started, okay? So, go ahead, continue.
Mr. Chair, then, I would like you to ask the employees if they are white supremacists. Do you support fascism? The people of this city deserve to have answers to those very straightforward questions. I will be listening closely for the answers to those questions in the public comment-response period. And in the days ahead, I'll be listening carefully for the council members, or the council as a whole, to publicly speak against this event coming to our area. We await a statement expressing that you have heard our very valid concerns and to tell those attending the tour that though they have found a way around the law by holding their event inside a church, outside the church, the law still stands and will be enforced. "We lived happily during the war" by Ilya Kaminsky. And when they bombed other people's houses, we protested, but not enough. We opposed them, but not enough. I was in my bed, around my bed, America was falling, invisible house by invisible house by invisible house. I took a chair outside and watched the sun. In the sixth month of a disastrous reign of the house of money, in the street of money, in the city of money, in the country of money, our great country of money, we, and forgive us, lived happily during the war.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Teresa Patrabowski. I live at 27 Burke Drive here in Batavia. I'm here tonight to talk about the farm animal situation. I unfortunately live next door to it, and it is no picnic for the last two and a half years having what's going on there. The smell is horrendous. From what I understand, she may change the hay once a week, but when you get eighty and ninety degree temperatures, it's unbearable. The noise from all the ducks, goats, chickens, dogs, and cats is just constant all day long. I can't enjoy my property, either in the front or the back. I had to put up a six-foot vinyl fence just to preserve my sanity, because everything was all against my fence line. The, I know that there was a lot of talk about service comfort support animals, but trust me, neither Jill or her daughter need those, they don't use them as service animals. When they are screaming at me and, as an eleven-year-old child, had both middle fingers up at me telling me to F off, she didn't need a goat by her side. The, just the goats roam all over the place. They've actually entered into my garage. I came home getting my groceries. I put my groceries on the step inside my garage. I was gonna go get my mail, and in come two goats. And they're huge. They have huge horns. They could really hurt someone. I take care of my grandson two days a week, and I've got a small dog, and those things, they gotta weigh at least, I don't know, 100, 150 pounds, and they have huge horns. They could really hurt somebody. As far as I've been undergoing since all this has started, I've been going under harassment from Jill Turner and her eleven-year-old daughter, who's very versed in the vulgar way. You can't, she's, they're very clear when they use all those words. It's just terrible. I can't even go out to get my mail, because they just started on me. And she's also entered her younger niece and nephew into the harassment. And I understand I can't do anything about it unless they do something physical to me or, you know, or endanger, threaten me. But it's just terrible. I mean, they go by in their car and scream stuff at me, and it's just, it's just terrible. The other night, she got mad because a couple of us neighbors were talking, and she had her daughter lay on her horn for a while. They brought a boombox out and were, like, playing it loudly. They were throwing firecrackers. She pressed a button to have a rooster cockadoodledoo out there. And then she started a fire, and I guess it's some kind of smokestack. But she put gasoline or charcoal fluid lighter on it, and then she wanted her eleven-year-old to start it. Thank God, she couldn't get it started, because the flames were, like, busting out from the top and all over. She even had to move her car. I don't know that that was supposed to alarm us, but, you know, it's just, it's just awful. And I'm sure that our, my property isn't worth beans. Who would buy it? I mean, would any of you buy my property? What would you give me for it? Okay, I'm sorry. And as far as I say, like, her dogs wander all over the place. They've bitten one of the neighbors recently. Her cats use all the neighbors' properties as their litter box. And I'd say the goats and the chickens are all over the place. She claims that they aren't, but she's hardly home. She was gone most of the weekend. And they do nothing. When she had Channel Two News come over, she got everything all cleaned up and everything looked great. So, but this little shed that she, they're housed in, she hadn't cleaned that in a year and a half. And then she was out there power washing it and making everything look nice, because, oh, it doesn't smell, oh, it looks great. But it's just, it's just, she's a very inconsiderate neighbor, and she is not a responsible animal owner. And I just, I just beg all of you to not let this go. I mean, as far as, like, registering, that would mean that she would be grandfathered in, and it's not gonna help it. And other neighbors, I mean, there's a fear factor there. Those things just roam around, and they just go all over. And then you call the police, and I know there's nothing they can do about it. And then she comes home, and then she gets mad because somebody called the police. I mean, she's written things, made posts online saying horrible things about me, and she's saying I've made all this up, but I've got, I've got pictures, I've got proof. She claimed on the Channel Two news thing that she only has two goats. Well, there was an article in the Batavian on July 16th where she had four goats at a petting zoo, and she said they were her four baby goats. So she has six. So, I thank you for your time, and I really hope that you will not let this continue any longer. Okay, thank you.
My name is John Lad. This is my wife, Melissa. We live at 31 Burke Drive. We live on the other side of the Turner residence. And really, Teresa said everything that we were gonna say. But I'd like to say that we've been dealing with the Turners for, ever since they moved in, which I believe is around 1986, and dealing with Jill as a youngster. And she's been nothing but trouble. And it's... She's violent. And it's all through the years, there's incidents that have happened. I'm not gonna get into them right now. But the bottom line is, and I'll just address one point with you, Chair. The animals for therapy, or whatever Jill claims, it would seem to me you'd have to spend time with the animals to get the therapy from them. If I put a camera up on my fence, which I had to put up to try to keep some of this stuff out, you would see nothing going on, other than them coming out once in a while, maybe changing the water, maybe fixing where the chickens had gotten out, where the ducks had gotten out. I have pictures, I have video, and this is just times where I just happened to catch it, because I'm walking in from work or leaving to go somewhere. I can't imagine how many other times, and I know other people have taken videos and pictures, and I guess all I'd say is, I live in the city. I don't live in the country. I'm all for therapy animals. We're animal lovers ourselves, but it's infringing on my rights, okay? So, I would hope that you would take that into consideration when you're determining whatever it is you're gonna determine, because it's not just the people that are here tonight. I just found out about this, that I was able to come and actually say something at 6:35. So I didn't have any prepared statement or anything, but I just wanted to address that. And like I say, I would have never thought I would have had to deal with anything like this, living in the city, okay? So, you know, as Teresa said, grandfathering Jill in does not solve anything. And I just hope that there can be a solution that will take into effect the rest of the neighbors, the immediate, the people that live on the street that have to deal with this. And I guess that's all I have to say.
The only other point I would like to bring up is, nobody has really spoke about the welfare of the animals as well. They're outside for hours. They have, if you do research on the particular animals that they have, there are specifics that they state, a pen, goats need room to graze. So, there's ducks that have no access to water. I, I mean, those are just some of the concerns as well. And to Teresa's point, you can't even speak to Jill and talk to her reasonably. Any kind of responsible pet owner takes responsibility for their pets. Again, we're pet owners. I love my dog. I would never begrudge somebody their pets or therapy animals, but you have to take care of them, and you have to be responsible and respectful of the people around you. And like my husband said, you wouldn't think that in a city setting that this would be such a concern, but to be treated violently and harassed, if you do say, state a concern as if our opinion doesn't matter, she's the only neighbor in the neighborhood. So, I guess that's all I would add to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Roach, lives on Grandview Terrace. Just an add-on for the farm animals. I do have a friend on the south side who has a very small backyard. That's pretty common on the south side. The people right behind her have chickens. It's maybe twelve feet, the fence to her house, and they have a small yard. The smell, the flies and everything, there are times she can't even open her window. We don't like new laws, but there has to be something done. There should be at least somewhere in the proposal, a setback for people who do have things like chickens on a property line, to keep them far enough away from the other people that smells and flies are not a concern. Maybe a certain amount of square footage for the chickens, depending on how many you have, and a setback. But the reason I signed up was that recently in the media, there's been a lot of articles about the mall, and I was wondering, other than the theater, which has got a lease, is there a timeline, or what is the plan to sell the city-owned property that's been taken in foreclosures? Some of the properties have been, you know, hanging around quite a while. Is the plan to hold them until the mall is rehabbed and maybe get a better price? Or there's no buyers, nobody wants them? Or nobody has really thought of setting up a time to put them up for bid, as for a proposal? So, maybe somebody can explain. What is the timeline to get rid of those city-owned foreclosed properties? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shannon Maudy. I live at 22 Burke Drive in Batavia. Today, I'm here as a neighbor and not as the executive director. I have asked the neighbors to come tonight to show united front against Jill's farm animals, her neglect and her abuse. The collecting of the animals has gotten out of control. When do we stop it? What point is too many? And when is it enough? I'm also sickened by the treatment of these animals. They live in a five-by-seven shed that when she doesn't want to deal with them, she just locks them in there. She goes away for the entire weekend, and they're just locked in this, you're talking two adult goats, four baby goats, four chickens, and two ducks that I know of. In her house, she has many more animals, sugar gliders, you can name any pet, and she has them. It has gotten so out of control with the smell. She has five dogs. She has, and I know you're gonna think I'm exaggerating, about twenty cats. They keep producing, so now they're just running wild, living off of everyone else's garbage. We now have coyotes. We have rats, mice, maybe they're mice. I might be exaggerating. We live in a very tight-knit neighborhood. We all get along. It is a clean neighborhood, and the violence that comes from that house, I just can't tolerate anymore. I am a very calm person, and I'm very reasonable, until I'm not. And now I'm taking a stand, and I want those animals gone. Myself, as well as my family, have had to chase these farm animals. We're talking goats, chickens, ducks, even geese at one point. And let's not forget the dogs and the cats. We have witnessed the dogs attack other animals, as well as the owners, as people walk by. You can never have a calm conversation with Jill about it, because when you try to speak with her, her and her daughter start yelling, screaming, swearing, blasting their music, setting off firecrackers, laying on the horn, and there is a lot more, but I'm sure you get my point. The neighbor that lives right next to her is tormented. Not everybody has my personality that can go toe-to-toe with Jill. She waters her lawn when Jill's not home, because she's afraid to come out of her house. That is not a way to live. She should be able to come out of her house and enjoy her property whenever she chooses. Anytime you go to talk to one of the neighbors, they come outside with their hands on their hips. They come over to the edge of their yard, and they shake the chicken seed, saying, "Here, chicken, chicken, chickens." And then they continue to spread the chicken feed all over the front yard, up to the line of the neighbors. Now, last year, I had to chase these goats that were, and it seems funny, it's really not, they charge you. They were running loose. Everyone's dogs were going crazy. I broke my toe. Who's paying for that? I had to. She didn't. And if you ask Jill, you know, what's going on? Why are you not taking care of your animals? How do you know they were mine? Well, I know they're yours, because nobody else in our neighborhood has goats. The chickens, nobody else has chickens. It's just unbearable, and I just wanna leave with one, I'm not even gonna get into the swearing. The swearing is unbearable. She is not an only, she's not only an unfit pet owner, but she's an unfit parent. She lets her eleven-year-old scream profanities yesterday. I don't know, do you mind if I swear? Okay, she told, she told me to suck her A, the eleven-year-old girl, and held up her middle fingers and said, "F you, f you, f you, f you." And I just, and what do you do? You can't argue with an eleven-year-old. I told Jill to just, you know, control her daughter. It was, it's just terrible. I do wanna leave you with this from the fire department, and maybe this can be added in to something that you guys can work up. But for a fire, if you have a recreational fire that is hazardous, offensive, objectable, or unreasonably interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of the life or property due to smoke or odor emissions, shall be prohibited. Which, to me, can apply for the animals as well, because right now, nobody is enjoying their life in the neighborhood. We can't go outside, we can't do anything. Thank you.
Counsel response to public comments?
I don't even know where to begin. This was just pretty wild. I think on the farm animals, there's common sense, there's rural animals and there's urban animals. And if you don't know the difference, then you should get a ticket for being ignorant. Because it's, it's, this is crazy.
Bob? Can we give some thought to that, and maybe...
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, we have finished the roofs, phase one and phase two, as we know. Phase one, doing the entire roof, came in higher than we anticipated, so we had to wait to build up some reserves and do phase two. Now we are addressing the silos as part of the settlement agreement. That'll be done through a million-dollar DRI grant. We are, we do have interested folks looking at properties, specifically the one behind Sunny's, for either lease or purchase. So there is, if anyone is interested, we are absolutely willing to work with them. The other parcels we've taken on are in really very poor condition at this point. One of them, you step down into, doesn't have a handicap entrance. But I think the plan is, as the improvements do get done in the mall, that we'll find a way to move those out with an RFP to a developer and not put them up for auction. At least, that's my recommendation, because if we put them up for auction, we don't know who we're gonna get, and they could continue to sit empty. We'd like to see those properties in full use, and by doing something like an RFP or having valid buyers come for them, we might be able to reactivate those spaces.
Any other counsel response?
Just to the citizens that are concerned about the animal situation, I just, for the record, so they know, I know one of the gentlemen said he just, he'd found out he could speak tonight and he'd have time to prepare. This will go to a public hearing when it gets to that point, which will give everyone an opportunity to prepare and come and speak, if you choose to do so.
Yeah, what's on the agenda today is to move it to the business, to send it to a public hearing and set the date. And then that's where we'll get the majority of our comments, and you'll have plenty of notice. It's written right here on the agenda, so there's a date that we'll set it for. So, I forget what it is now, but I believe it's the next council meeting in September, I think.
Correct.
So, you'll have, there'll be plenty of time for public comment on that specific item alone. So, we'll take some time for that, to do that. Bob?
Yeah. Advice I can offer, I went through this some years ago, quite a few years ago, for the neighbor that had a couple of very big dogs, and our yards are small. There are things that can be done. There's county health laws. I utilized the county health department. I got them involved. They came down, talked to the dog owners, made them clean them right up. There's laws like creating a public nuisance. When you have an animal running around the neighborhood, that's a public nuisance. There's other laws governing, like you said, fires. The fire department can come and put the fire out. And I know of cases in past years where they've shown up at someone's house and put the fire out. It's that simple. You can't have a roaring fire smoking out the neighbors, and, you know, and there's a lot of that going on these days. So there are a lot of laws. And if somebody wants to get mouthy, let them get mouthy with the police department. Let them tell the policeman where to go, and let them tell the policeman that they're not gonna do what they're supposed to be doing. And we have a good police department. They'll handle it. So, with summer still here and the hot weather, I would suggest you get on their phone tomorrow and start making some calls. We also, you can call the county dog warden, mistreatment of animals. Call Society for the Protection of Animals, get them involved. Trust me, they'll get down here and they'll do something. If animals are being mistreated or abused, it'll, within forty-eight hours, somebody will be knocking on doors. They, and they will confiscate animals. They will take them and haul them away if they're being mistreated. So, if I were you, I mean, you know, we have plenty of laws on the books. Passing a law doesn't fix anything, basically. But interaction and immediate action fixes things. So, my advice to the neighbors, get involved. Like I said, the county health department, they were there within twenty-four hours when I filed a complaint with them quite a few years ago. Those people moved. They ended up moving. The yard was disgraced, manure, flies, we couldn't even use our yard. So, I do sympathize with you. Thank you.
Rachel, this thing has been going on for at least eighteen months, this animal thing. Wasn't all that tried? Didn't we try everything we could? Didn't we try everything we could try and we could not find anything that would apply here? Or am I mistaken?
As far as I know, I believe we did send county health over at one time. But I'd have to look back in the file.
And I remember having conversations about our code went down there, the police went down there, the animal control went down there. And that's where we found the missing part of our code where we needed, I believe, to make this correction, to cover that gap.
Because we can, as it stands today, we're unable to regulate not only this situation, but any other situation in the city where there may be these farm animals residing in different areas of the city. And also, the legislative change that you asked us to look into considers for future so that when you buy a house in the city, you can feel protected, that you're not gonna have cows and sheeps moving in next door to you.
I just wanted to be a member of the council person. He only said, "This is a city, we shouldn't have farm animals in the city." Okay? And like you said, houses are closed together and so forth. And if we need to, you know, write a law, then we need to write a law. And saying that, well, just another law doesn't happen. Guess what? If you have a law, you break the law, guess what? There's consequences, okay? We've gotta do something about this.
I just simply want you to know that we do understand and we do care. And I have been in touch with your young lady. She calls me a lot. So she's very difficult to work with, and I do understand. So don't feel that we're just putting it down because we're not immediately saying, "Here we are, here's a new law, we're done." We will work on this, I promise you.
Anyone else? Okay, communication.
Yes, each and every one of you, show your true colors. You are fascist!
Please leave.
And you are on the wrong side of history.
Please leave.
I am leaving blatantly from the city of San Diego.
Okay, go ahead.
The bid submitted their application for the Italian Festival. It'll be on Saturday, August 20th, 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. On Jackson Center and school streets with music, food, games, and crafts.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, next one.
All Babies' Cherish submitted their vendor event application. They did change the date to Saturday, November 5th, to accommodate another event that put in an application for the same date. So they're trying to work together.
So it's now November 5th, you're saying?
November 5th, correct. Yep. Everything else is the same, 10 to 4 p.m. in the city concourse with crafts, artisans, et cetera.
Okay, any questions or concerns on that? Okay, one thing, on the Ascension Parish, they're requesting two police officers now, so that has to be factored into that. I think you're kind, somebody's working, I think Sean or somebody's working on that.
Yep.
I just wanted to add that today because I got the call today and I told them about it right now. Just to let you know.
Yes, I did forward that on to the event review committee, and just waiting to hear back on the cost for that.
You may have plenty of time, but I wanted to make sure it was in early.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So Ascension Parish submitted an application for Oktoberfest fundraiser on Saturday, October 1st, noon to 11:00 p.m. This would be on Sumner from Osterhout to their parking lot at 19. Is it 19 Sumner, I believe? Again, vendors, food trucks.
And then beer tent, that kind of stuff, on Oktoberfest. Any questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, it's just gonna be in the street?
No. They want the street blocked off for children's games and stuff like that. Because it's, the Osterhout extension, it's a dead end there. So it's just about...
It's like it always is.
Yeah, a couple hundred feet of roadway just so they can, you know, have places for bathrooms and things like that, because they're kind of tight.
The question I have is then, why does all this other stuff enter into it? Like, if they're serving liquor on private property?
And that's my thought, too. It's their license, their property, but it's kind of on the form, so they check the boxes. They're not gonna need insurance.
Right, I asked why they even needed to submit it in the first place because the application location first just said 19 Sumner. I thought, then why are you doing this? Then she clarified to say they wanted to close the road in that area, and that's what...
That end, right, yeah. That's why I, because they called me and I suggested they do it.
This wouldn't really apply with, right, all the liquor.
They wouldn't need, they wouldn't need insurance because they're not on city property. But they, they need officers and they need the street closed off. So... Okay, no problem.
Jacasa submitted their application for the Overdose Awareness Day event. This would be on a Wednesday, August 24th, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Austin Park.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, next one.
Batavia Notre Dame United submitted an application for a bike rally on Sunday, August 21st, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. It would be throughout the city and would start and end at the high school. It is a ride throughout the city, but it is not a race. It's just more of a fundraising event to have a bike ride through the city.
Any questions on that? Okay, next one.
Jess King submitted their application for the backpack giveaway and chicken barbecue on Saturday, August 27th, 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Austin Park. Chicken barbecue with a back-to-school backpack giveaway.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, next one.
Danielle Johnson Rodriguez submitted an application for Fordham Drive Block Party on Saturday, August 20th, 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. For a picnic-style gathering on their street between Eugene and Holmes Ave.
Any questions on that? Okay, next one.
And the last one, Ever Present Church submitted their application for a rummage sale on Saturday, August 20th, in their parking lot outside of the church from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Any questions on that?
Where is their parking lot?
It's a city, it's a city lot, it's just outside of there. That's why they submitted their application.
It's in the mall parking lot.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Okay. The next city council conference of business meeting, we have Monday, September 12th, at 7:00 p.m. in City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. Is that supposed to be a double meeting, or is there a special something going on? Aren't we back to normal hours in September?
Yeah.
So it should either be a conference or a business?
It's a business meeting.
Okay, so that's corrected. So the next regular city business meeting, we have that on Monday, September 12th, 2022, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. The Austin Park MOU for jail contract.
So I'm presenting a MOU along with an access agreement between Genesee County and the city of Batavia to use the space portion of the southwest corner of Austin Park while the Genesee County jail building is restored by Montanti Construction Group. We're allowing, looking to allow the city, or the contractor to use and fence off an area no bigger than 100 by 100 feet in order to store materials, portions of the facade that's going to be ripped off so that they can be guarded from anybody. Basically, the idea is to not impede on the soccer fields, also to have the contractor agree that any restoration that needs to take place due to the construction equipment being there, to the grass and anything, be taken care of once they are gone from the construction site. The idea also for this is to adequately keep parking open for Batavia PD along with jail employees so that we're not impeding taking up, you know, little to any parking space while they're working.
Okay, I have one question.
Yeah.
The agreement is effective from July to July. So that's a year.
Yes.
When we say temporary, how temporary? Are we talking the whole year?
There's a potential for that. Because a lot of that is masonry work that is not going to be able to be done throughout the winter time, yes.
So they might put their stuff there in the fall, and then it just winters there until spring, and then they're done. Okay.
I have a question. What happens if they don't restore it? Let's say they leave it tore up, which it will be, I mean, it's sod. So driving forklifts and storing heavy stuff there, it'll be a mess. What happens if they say, "We're done, they pull out, and I will get back to you"?
Then the city attorney will work with the county to get a hold of the contractor, get that fixed. But I highly doubt with the relationship that we have with the county that we would run into that problem. And if we do, I think we have a good enough relationship with the county that they would come back and restore that for us.
I would hope so. Well, we'd work it out.
Yeah, absolutely. I have full faith in both of the parties.
When you say temporary, I'm thinking two or three months.
Yes, correct.
And then I look at the data on here, when I read this, or thorough the whole contract, I'm thinking, that's a year. That's not really, that's given, and half of that is gone because we're not into July anymore, we're already into August. And they haven't even started, we haven't even got the MOU set.
And I think part of the idea there was to, that they wanted to make sure, to give us a timeframe that they definitely have that done and just due to the fact that a lot of it is weather dependent.
But by next July, it's all cleaned up and reseeded and gone.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not gonna be able to do the mystery in the winter anyway because you don't, they can't afford for temporary heat and coverage.
And it'll be adequately locked at all times and, you know...
It's up to that, it's up to that, at least, yeah, correct.
I work in the building, so they started today.
Oh, they did, right?
They started with asbestos abatement. So, and they've gotta go all the way around. So everything is a process. We thought it was gonna be a lot shorter, too. But believe it or not, they have to take out every single stone and number it. And the stone has to go back, exactly the same stuff where they took it out from. So it's, it's gonna be a lengthy process. I mean, probably into next year.
Okay, cool. Anyone else?
Counsel President, if I might, just to answer the question of Councilman Vilkowski. It's a condition of the county's MOU that they restore the property or that the contractor restore the property. Then ultimately, the access agreement places that responsibility directly on the contractor who's performing for the county. And if the contractor should fail, then the city gets the option to do that and charge them back.
And it's on the county.
I would agree with the DPW director that there is a good relationship with the county, and we're gonna hold them to make sure that this is done properly.
Right. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, ultimately, if the city can restore it and build them back for it, it's...
Or, yeah, it's gonna get restored. And then the proper responsible party will bear the burden.
Thank you, George.
So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? Because we're in that summer moment. Okay, that will move? The bond resolution?
Thank you, Council President. We have before you a resolution to bond a 2023 Spartan Rescue Pumper. The final cost of the pumper truck is $801,681. It'll be funded through a $100,000 USDA grant, $665,000 USDA loan at 2.55% and $36,681 in fire reserves. When I came to accept the award from USDA, we thought we'd only need to use $20,000 in fire reserves. But pricing goes up daily, so this is our final price. So we will need that $36,681 in fire reserves. The current fire reserve balance is $370,000.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have two questions. Number one, who manufactures the cab chassis? And number two, where's the closest dealer that can service this truck?
It's a single-source manufacturer. So Spartan produces the cab and chassis and also the body. And the service will be in Tana Long.
Who makes the powertrain, I guess I would ask?
It's gonna be a Cummins engine.
Cummins, okay. Transmission to?
Allison.
Allison, okay. Thank you.
Time frame?
394 days when we officially purchase it.
So it's gonna be at least a year before it's, or a month?
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on supply.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that one to tonight's business meeting? I think it's move. Our large grant for the AGRV properties?
Thank you, Council President. AGRV properties owned by Matt Gray will be spending $140,000 to replace exterior doors on the back of his building at Eli Fish and build an outdoor patio, two-story patio and deck for outside dining adjacent to Jackson Square. As many of you will remember, the city did sell him a portion of Jackson Square to square off his property with the intent that this deck and outside dining would take place into the future. He has applied for a RLF grant from the city in the amount of $20,000, and it was reviewed and recommended by the BDC board.
Can I see, it was a 78.66 out of 100 score for...
Correct.
The proper procedure of scoring the value of doing that downtown?
Yep, and just to be clear, he couldn't receive 20 points because there was no residential living. And that's one of the scoring criteria. So he was as close to 80, which is all the points he could get with that score.
Okay, any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Okay, I think it's move. The 73 on Rotary, 73 Main Street?
Yep, so 73 on Rotary LLC, which is Peter Casey's business, is looking for grant funding that he will match with private funds to expand the Wine Goddess retail store, to increase the usable space inside the shop, update their break room and bathroom facility. And that total investment will be an $80,000 project. The Batavia Development Corporation also reviewed this project and application. It scored a 77.5 out of 100. Again, it couldn't receive those 20 points because it didn't have residential living and is recommended to move forward for $20,000 in grant funding.
One thing I see is a discrepancy here on the, from the board of directors from BDC. They're saying the score was 74.5. And then your memo says 77.5. Is that a typo or... I mean, it's only a few points and it's not gonna make a difference. What's the secondary one?
Yes.
Okay, there's two here, I already bypassed it. No, wait a minute.
No, it's my typo.
It is the right one.
I guess 77.5 on mine.
On her, but it's on the other one.
The second property is 7981 Main.
The one I'm looking at here is 73 Main Street?
Correct, it's my typo.
So your memo should have said 74.5.
Correct.
Okay, it's still a pretty high score, so I'm not concerned about it. I just wanted to make sure I saw a discrepancy here. Any other questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's move. The next one is 7981 Main Street?
Correct. Also by 73 on Rotary LLC. The grant funding will be matched with private funds from 73 on Rotary LLC to renovate the basement, first floor and second floor common areas of the building located at 7981 Main Street. The basement and first floor will accommodate Del Plato Casey Law Firm and allow the firm to expand. Kind of the neatest part of the project is they're opening up what used to be covered in Alberti's Drug Store and atrium down into the basement. So you'll actually be able to see down into that space. Second floor renovations will include elevator hallway renovations for tenants. This is a shared common space with the building next door. And I've spoken to one of the tenants who has an office upstairs who is extremely excited about the renovations you'll be doing. The total investment for this project is $820,000, and they are requesting the maximum loan amount of $20,000. It is a separate property, so it does, each property qualifies separately for the RLF grant fund. And this one scored a 76. Is my memo wrong again? A 76, not a 77.5. I had two typos. Out of 100, again, it does not have residential. The second floor holds multiple office space upstairs. I think there's six.
In all fairness, having the same person apply for two different buildings kind of confused me a little bit, too. Because it's kind of, I might see it double, is it a duplicate? I understand, it's two separate, two totally different projects.
Yep.
Totally different reasons.
Both qualify because they're totally separate buildings.
Okay, so any questions or concerns on that one? All right. Are we in consensus to move that one to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Okay, I think it's move. The public animal, or the public, the city, the public, wait a minute. Animal ordinance set a public hearing.
Thank you.
I got confused for a minute. All right, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Before you have a resolution to set a public hearing for animal ordinance law, the city council recently requested that the Planning and Development Committee Council recently requested that the Planning and Development Committee review a change in city code titled Restrictions on Animal and Fowl. The Planning and Development Committee did meet. They reviewed the code revisions on July twenty-sixth and recommended the changes with two additions, one of which I agree with, um, to limiting hen chickens to six. And to be clear, hen chickens means you cannot have a rooster. Uh, however, I do not believe that council should consider the second recommendation of the Planning Development Committee. And respectfully, um, there's no way to, I would say, no good way for our staff to go out and inventory and survey and have people come in to register wild animals or fowl or goats inside their yard. We'd have to figure out a tracking mechanism. We'd have to put bracelets on them, GPS in them. I, I mean, it, it can go on and on on how we do this. And then how would we be convinced that if they brought another animal in at a later date and said, nope, this was already grandfathered in? So to make this process, I think, cleaner, it is to, my recommendation is that council moves forward with the public hearing without the section of grandfathering or registration.
There should be no friendly animals, no zoo animals. You should head. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Again. Well, it makes sense because it would take up so much resources and expense of city tax dollars trying to chase people, animals coming and going. I, I just don't see how that's even feasible, but.
I do respect the deliberation that the Planning and Development Committee went through. Um, they had a long discussion and they decided to, like I said, keep the, um, ordinance as it was written, but they did have those suggestions.
So at this point, what we're sending to the public hearing is a limitation on chickens is the only thing added to the original thing. We're not going to add the registration recommendation to it. We are adding the six chicken limitation to it.
Well, there's many chickens. There shouldn't be. You want eggs, what a story you are.
You know, again, that's.
No, 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 no chickens. That's, that's ridiculous. Please.
I understand that, but I mean, that's what they're recommending. That's what they want to put in.
That's what we have to discuss.
We'll discuss it at the public hearing. We can go from there.
Because how are they going to be able to monitor? Like you said, they don't have any people to monitor. I think how are you going to monitor if they've got six or more, if they get more?
I think that's going to be done on a complaint basis. I mean, we're not going to be out counting chickens.
If we get a complaint, oh, or they go and they see twelve chickens, obviously, that's pretty.
Or once, sometimes if the neighbor knows it, they'll get rid of those chickens for their time being because they'll know something's going on.
People could do anything. So we'll discuss, I mean, right now we're just talking about the public hearing component. But I mean, I, I respect your, your additions and things, but at this point, we're going through the process.
I, I'd like to say something. I'm very sympathetic to the neighboring property owners. I know what you're going through, but the way this law is written, I, I strongly oppose it. I oppose any ordinance that infringes on the rights of handicapped citizens and also violates federal and state laws. Federal laws allow handicapped people to have a dog or a small horse for a service animal. The state law allows you with a certificate to own any animal. It doesn't list the animals. It lists companion animals. So I have a problem with that. The law also, the proposal states, no person shall feed wild animals, which will outlaw feeding birds. Many people in the community feed birds or wild animals. So someone can call the police and say, hey, this guy's feeding wild animals. I'm going to have you do something. Okay? The problem I have, it appears because of one problem homeowner, we're going to pass an ordinance infringing on many citizens, handicap, children of four age have little rabbits, agricultural animal, pet rabbits, pet owners. We have plenty of health regulations, uh, manure deposits, public nuisances endangering the public. I think something can be taken care of, and I'd like to see when there's a problem, let's just take care of it. Let's not just start passing laws, ordinances and everything else. And, uh, you know, we have a lot of laws on the books right now that are almost impossible to enforce. On the news tonight I watched in Buffalo where there was approximately a hundred unlicensed vehicles and a parade going down the city street. Everybody blowing through the intersection, ATVs and motorcycles and all that. None of them had plates on, and by the time the police get there, they're gone, disappeared. You know, we're just, our country's going out of control, but I can't support any law that infringes on the rights of handicapped citizens. I think Independent Living presented a good letter as evidence, and, uh, Mr. Cohen presented one for the four eight. So I say, let's just deal with the problem and be done with it. Thank you.
I have a question. So if you were at a Home Depot, you saw some with a service dog. Have you ever seen a service goat walk into Home Depot?
With a what?
With a goat as a service animal?
No, but I've seen dogs that aren't service dogs in Home Depot.
Yeah, I would, why would you want to have a service goat walk in a store? Would you want to have a dirty goat in the store? When you're shopping?
Well, I'm going to tell you what, Paul.
Wait, 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 hold on. I can clarify this.
Isn't this?
There, there's saying in Independent Living, if you read the report, a service animal is a, a dog or a small horse.
Right.
Okay? Uh, the other animals cannot leave the house, support animal or whatever. There was another term. So I'm going to ask Georgia this.
I think they're companion animals.
Well, maybe, but I'm going to ask George, how does this federal law affect our situation here, George?
These references in the letter from Independent Living are not typically incorporated into municipal zoning codes. It's a matter of state law. The ADA provides the ability of an individual to have that particular animal as a service animal or support animal that's governed under federal law and federal regulations. Municipalities as a matter of course do not go forth and adopt the ADA references to the regulations and the statute in the zoning code. If it's an issue for a particular individual, it can be addressed on a case-by-case basis subject to their need for the animal. But again, it's not incorporated into each municipality zoning code because it's a matter of federal law. So in terms of compliance with the ADA, if those particular individuals have an ADA issue and have an ADA certification that they're entitled to have an animal of that sort, it will be addressed and the federal statute will be abided by. But to make a blanket exception as being recommended by an independent living entity who's, you know, interested maybe in expanding this, the statute, they don't write the statutes. The municipalities write the statutes. The zoning codes are very clear and very direct, and again, they do not generally incorporate references to the ADA.
Well, and one other thing I need to clarify so we don't misinform the public is songbirds are a separate category altogether. They're not considered a wild animal and they're not considered a wild fowl because we asked this question the last time. So songbirds and feeding birds are unaffected. Doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance. It has to do with domesticated farm-type animals other than dogs and cats, because that's where our code is in error because it doesn't have that in there, and that's where we run into trouble. And it's really easy to pie in the sky, why can't we just talk it over and work it out? We've been working on this for eighteen months and it hasn't gone anywhere. We've tried everything. The neighbors have tried everything, and at this point, it's unfortunate, but we're in, we're backs against the wall. We need to give the police and the code some kind of authority to physically go and do something about it. Right now, they do not have that other than the good nature of the offending party, and that's not happening.
If I could, Council President, it also addresses feral cats in here. So we were able to take the opportunity to address feeding of feral cats, which we get complaints on every three weeks or so. Someone has, is feeding feral cats. The neighbor won't stop feeding them. In this case, you cannot feed feral cats anymore in our city. If you want a cat, you want it in your home, own it as a pet, but do not put food out that attracts all types of other animals, which we've heard about tonight. So I will say that there's a piece of this that I don't want to be overlooked on the feral cats. Thank you.
Anyone else? And right now, we're just talking about the public hearing aspect of that.
And I, I was going to say, I don't want to get off track here because this discussion tonight is about setting.
It should be saved for the public hearing.
But in response to, to, uh, Mr. Byakowski, and I understand exactly what you're saying, we certainly don't want to add more rules if we don't have to. But this body has been elected as policymakers. That's what we are. Um, I don't enforce the law, I make the laws, and we wouldn't be making this law, um, up until this point because there was never a problem in the city or there was never a complaint. Maybe there was a problem, we never had an official complaint, so we've never had to deal with this at this point. I remember back in the seventies, and I'm actually going to research it to find out what the city code was, but in the seventies, I, I grew up on Bang Street and the houses are about six inches apart. And I remember my neighbor got the bright idea that he was going to raise a pig and have it butchered. And we had a pig basically in our backyard because all that separated us was a chain link fence. And I remember my dad, before he was in politics, called the city of Batavia and said, what can I do about it? And they sent somebody down and the pig was gone the next day, and he was told that there were no farm animals allowed in the city of Batavia. So I don't know what went wrong between the seventies and, in twenty-twenty-two, but I believe that at one point in time, the city did not allow farm animals except for chickens. Um, so again, it hasn't been a problem since back in the seventies. We haven't had any complaints. All of a sudden, we have a complaint, and not only complaint, but we have a neighborhood issue now. Um, and so here we are, we have to, we have to make policy now. That's what we are, policymakers. Um, and so we have to make a policy in order to prevent this from not only happening in this neighborhood, but happening in anybody's neighborhood within the city of Batavia. I agree with Paul, um, maybe not as passionately as Paul, but, um, yeah, you know, why do we have farm animals in the city of Batavia? If I want farm animals, I'll move to the country.
And, and most of the time, maybe just having a complaint, the reasonable neighbor said, okay, I guess I didn't realize, I will get rid of these. In this case, we tried it.
Right.
And it fell on deaf ears. It didn't work.
So it's time for us now to formulate some kind of a policy?
Unfortunately, as it may be, but we have to do something to rectify for the future. That's my thought on it. Here it is.
It just means.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, as much as this is delightful to hear, this is not what we're discussing. We're simply supposed to be discussing whether or not we're going to have a public hearing.
Correct.
I know, but we just got passionate enough.
Well, everybody's here right now, so we might as well give you our opinions on, we support your situation. So, um, are we in favor to move this to tonight's business meeting so that we can set a public hearing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Grants administrator, please.
Thank you, Council President. The city of Batavia, as you know, has been very successful in capital planning and receiving grants for strategic infrastructure projects throughout the city. We're currently managing over eleven point two million in grant funds for various projects and have another eight point five million in grant applications out at this time. We do not have a full-time grants administrator or compliance officer to manage this grant portfolio. Typically, the city manager, the DPW director, and the deputy director of finance are tasked with trying to keep up with all the emails and documents and submissions and reports and compliance, uh, that need to be done each individually for each grant because every single state or federal agency has different rules. Um, with what we're facing in terms of lead line replacements and the work at the, um, water plant and other sewer infrastructure improvements that we need, I'd like council to consider the creation of this grants administrator position. Um, I have a list of what types of activities they would be working on. Um, if I do have approval, we'd move forward with the director of human resources, working with civil service to, uh, fine tune the position and get it advertised. Um, it would be funded through the operating budget, sixty percent in the water fund, thirty percent in the sewer fund, and ten percent in the general fund. Expenditures in the general fund would be expected to rise by ten thousand to fund the position, and if needed, budget amendments can be made during the six-month budget, departmental review, or at the end of the year.
Yeah, uh, one of the things I, I want to table was, uh, for a short period of time, I did talk with Genesee, uh, with the, uh, planning and department or the Genesee Regional Planning Department, and I talked to, uh, an individual there, Mr. Sutherland, and he informed me that they are now managing grants. They are providing the service of grant, uh, grant management at little to no cost to the communities, and they're writing it right into the grants. And they are also, uh, will, are going to start providing the service of, uh, uh, grant applications. And, uh, he said he'd love the opportunity to come up and do a presentation to council. And I called the county manager and he informed me that's the route they're going to. They don't have a grant manager. And so, you know, today I had two phone calls from constituents that are, were a little put out with me because their property taxes are going up, and they said they don't see any growth or job opportunities in the community, but they do see taxes going up and they have some serious concerns in the direction we're going in. So, you know, if there's anything we can do to not hire someone, I'd be in favor of it. So I'd like to just table this and have, uh, Mr. Sutherland come up and do a presentation. I just don't see, you know.
If I could respond, um, even if we did allow, and all due respect to Mr. Sutherland, who's a great friend of mine, uh, even if we did allow the Finger Lakes Regional Economic Development Council to administer the grants, all of the emails from the state agencies would still be coming to me, me, and you. We would be still having to get all that information over to Mr. Sutherland and his team. So it, the workload wouldn't decrease at all in our offices, and we, the financial tracking part of this is why we really need it, because if we don't have someone in-house, it would still fall on all of us to get the canceled checks and everything we need to submit for a grant. So I, why absolutely respect your, um, investigation into other ways to provide the service. I don't feel that would be an adequate way to go, and I would not support that.
So you're telling us that you've already looked into that kind of thing?
Yeah, we still would be using, um, firms like La Bella and other agencies as a secondary administrative source. Um, this is an internal position that can access all the records, that can field all the paperwork and responses needed, that can put out the RFPs, that can comply with the, um, construction, um, what are they called? Compliance, basically, the wage rates, uh, and, and all those things of that nature. So it takes a massive amount of paperwork off of our top staff so we can get back to doing high-level planning for our infrastructure and strategic planning in the organization.
I have to agree with Rachel. If you need this position filled, then we shouldn't wait.
Well, and I also have another concern of a council member going behind the city manager and calling other agencies and trying to work out a deal after reading our agenda. I mean, that's another whole problem all in itself, but, um, I also agree with you. I know that you'd have to be doing the majority of the work anyway, and then we'd be giving outside agencies access to maybe somewhat privileged information by accident when they're searching other things if we gave them access to our computer system.
And we never would allow them in our financial.
Yeah, so we're talking, it actually sounds like more of a duplication to go to outside and basically having it all in-house and just filing it right here, and any questions, come right back here instead of relaying it to somebody else and back to us. It just creates another step that, and a confusing process, all right? I mean, if you ever administered a grant, if you ever done one of these, they're not simple, and there's a lot of reporting requirements and deadlines and emails that fly around. I mean, I get them because I get copied in to Rachel automatically for whatever reason. I forward them to her just to make sure she's got them, and that's confusing enough. So just add, add into the whole thing as well. So anybody have a thought?
When I first read through this, Rachel, um, I, I'm not a, a big proponent of adding another position to the staff, but also when you, when you look at what that staff position could provide the city, uh, it opens up a, a whole another world to us. There's a lot of grant money out there available, as we're finding out as, as a city. There's a lot of the projects that we're experiencing in the city that are, are here and in the process because of grant money. So it's extremely important that we utilize every grant dollar that's available to us, whether it be statewide or federally. And I think this position, for, for the, the cost of having the position, I think it'll, it'll well pay for itself as I thought through the whole process. Um, and I thought, you know, I didn't, wasn't quite sure where you were going to come, come back at a, at a salary range, um, but at that salary range, it certainly seems, um, like it'll be cost-effective to have a person in that position that can not only administer the grants, but also go after additional grant money that you or your staff may not have the time to, to look into. And so some of those grant dollars may fall through the cracks where we, we could have taken advantage of them. So I think in the long run, let's not, uh, you know, let's not trip over dollars to get to nickels because I think that's what we would be doing.
You know, it makes sense. I mean, one grant for a hundred thousand dollars is, that pays for the salary and you still got a profit there, one grant. And I think when you're a city employee working for your own city, for your own grants versus an outside agency that, well, while we're distracted, we're over in Leroy's grant right we're over in Leroy's grant right now, we're gonna get back to you later. When you got somebody hungry for our own grants and our own city and their loyalty is here, I think you get a better product. I really do. It's just my opinion on it. I mean, and again, you know, you know your staff, you know what you got. I mean, if you really need this position, I'm willing to support that.
Another thing may be this, this may be this. How do we look as a body? And we're going begging somewhere else for help when we're perfectly capable of doing it on our own, having full and direct control, and not waiting for an answer that, you know, said, well, we got something going on over here, we got, we'll get back to you. There's no getting back to us. We're perfectly capable of doing it on our own, and I'll even say doing it better than the Finger Lakes region.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask, so they, they will write grants as well or just manage the grants you're bringing in?
Both, so there will be a writing grant component. But first off, I see learning the management of all the ones we have in the portfolio right now and being fully responsible because there are different types of audits that go on as grants close out. And we need to be extremely careful with our documents and our records as we move through these grants. And it's tedious and time-consuming, and this person would be a hundred percent responsible. And I'd just like to add, the majority of the grants we're seeing come through are water and wastewater. And those are the funds that are going to be supporting this position ninety percent. So the general fund, and, and to speak back to the tax issue, will have a very minimal contribution to this position.
So when you're gonna take sixty, thirty, ten? Because now naturally, I understand the wage is fifty-three to sixty-four thousand, but you've got forty thousand worth of fringe in there. And depend, you know, you're gonna have medical, so it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollar position.
Correct.
Do you have enough in those three budgets?
Correct, well, our workers' comp and our health fund are totally separate funds, so yes. But again, that, that up to ten thousand has your social security and your FICA. Don't get me wrong. Inside of that ten thousand for the general fund, so.
And you have a senior dollar or family plan.
Yep.
Sure, I'm a employer, I mean, it gets real costly real quick. I don't think anybody's taking the fringe into consideration.
But those would be in the health fund, so that would be.
It's still sitting, it's still blocking the tax cover or something.
Correct.
No, absolutely.
Um, but again, we have the ability, we, we are a utility in the water fund and the sewer fund. And the more money we can bring in to do these pipeline projects, to do Bank Street, to do that there, it's gonna save money on our police building because there are things that we needed to do. And it's coming from water and sewer fund. And we're able to raise the rate if need be. The hope is that we continue to have good years and we continue to invest. But every dime we can bring in for infrastructure projects is another reason not to raise rates in those funds as well and our citizens.
Just an administrative question. If I read that correctly, this position would be accountable or responsible to the assistant city manager?
That's correct, yes, in the administrative department, yes.
So are we in consensus to move to the business meeting?
Yes, of course.
Counsel President, I think if there was a proposition to that, not done yet, a consent of counsel, maybe a vote would be in order.
Okay, so call the roll, please. Yes is to move it, no is to not move.
Can I start with Council President Jankowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
No.
The Seeker for Jackson Street Water Project?
Thank you, Council President. On your desk before you, you have the Seeker for Jackson Street Water Project. And tonight, I'm recommending that you pass the resolution to declare that you will serve as lead agency for the Wat- sys, Waters, Jackson Street Water System Improvement Project. The city council, in its capacity of lead agency, has caused to be prepared an environmental assessment of the significance of any potential environmental impact of the action described above. And thereby, you declare that based on the environmental record, which has been prepared, the project will result in no major impacts and therefore will cause, not cause significant damage to the environment, and you can issue a negative declaration under Seeker at this time.
Any questions? Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I move, motion to adjourn. Second in back, Mr. Beal, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
All right, Richmond?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
And now open the regular business meeting. You've all received the copy of the June twenty twenty-two financials. Any questions or concerns or additions or additions?
I'll find it.
Okay, are we in consensus to approve those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, proceeding with the July twenty twenty-two minutes. Any kind of questions or concerns or any additions, additions? Are we in consensus to approve the twentieth, July twenty-two minutes? Agenda items? Sixty-nine, twenty twenty-two, the memorandum of understanding with Genesee County for the construction. Mr. Canelli? Seventy, twenty twenty-two, the fire truck? Seventy-one, twenty twenty-two, the first revolving loan fund grant? Mr. Richmond? Seventy-two, twenty twenty-two, there's the second one involving the seventh and eighth street. Uh, Beal? Seventy-three, twenty twenty-two, the final revolving loan fund grant? Mr. McGinnis? Seventy-four, twenty twenty-two, the animal ordinance for the public hearing, to set the public hearing, this breaks. Seventy-five, twenty twenty-two, the grant administrative position? Mr. Beal? And seventy-six, twenty twenty-two, the Seeker for Jackson Water Project? Mr. Byakowski? City Attorney, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
City managers' report?
Nothing to report on it this time.
Committee report?
Very quickly, I'll remind all of you that August twentieth is the Italian festival, which is going to be absolutely incredible. Lights, music, everything that you could possibly want and a lot of good food. And August twenty-seventh, you'll have to get up early in the morning to go to Elickett Avenue to watch the soapbox derby come on.
Anyone else? Unfinished business? Okay, resolutions. Sixty-nine, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution agreement to approve an agreement memorandum of understanding with Genesee County.
Second in back, Mr. Schmidt? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution seventy, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing general obligation bonds of the city of Batavia, Genesee County, New York to finance the acquisition of a fire truck, the expenditure of sums for such first purpose and determining other matters in connection therewith.
Second in back, Mr. Pacino. Any questions or concerns on that? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-one, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the Batavia revolving loan fund grant award and authorizing execution of our participation agreement.
Second in back, Mr. Beal? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, resolution seventy-two, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Beal, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the Batavia revolving loan fund grant award and authorizing execution of the participation agreement.
Second in back, Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beal?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?